Okay, we will call tonight's work session to order. Okay, I don't have an agenda. Oh, here it is. Okay, should we, can we do roll call?
Tyler?
Here.
Jeff?
Yep.
John is still...
John is en route.
Deb?
Here.
And Andrew?
Here.
Okay, um, looks like we have, this is, uh, this evening is a work session, so we would need approval of our agenda as posted.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the agenda passes. Our first item is, and we've got several of the, I think we have all of the administrators on Zoom. Thank you for attending. I know some of you guys are away from work this week, and it's greatly appreciated that you take time to be here. Um, and I think we have Vic in route, so he will be here very shortly. Um, tonight is an opportunity for us to have a work session and a discussion regarding our return to learn for next school year. Um, as a work session, there aren't really decisions to be made tonight. It is an opportunity for us to discuss and clarify, and maybe brainstorm, have some back and forth question and answers, is that fair to say, Tyler? Between the administration team and the board. Um, so that said, uh, there's a number of documents that we had, um, sent out in the, you know, regarding the, not, not documents sent out, but reference to that in our, in our meetings about guidance that we had briefly discussed in our return to learn program. Hopefully, if everybody has paper copies or electronic copies of those available. Uh, no, new document, not the new documents, but we can go from there.
I'd like to capture everything in the Dropbox.
Yeah, saw that.
With some links.
Thank you very much. Um, okay. Tyler, did you want to kick off? I think Tyler had some ideas for facilitating the conversation, so. Can everybody on the phone here before we start?
We good?
Thumbs up, if you can hear.
Volume?
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, again, appreciate everybody taking this time. This is meant to be a follow-up from our July 1st meeting, and we received a lot, a lot of good information for the return to learn, right? So, thanks Carrie and all of the committee, which I know the admin team was on. That was a lot of great information. Now we need to move forward clarifying how we proceed, right? And what our plans are for the fall semester, beginning on, welcome, John.
Thank you.
I believe, is it August 27th? Yep. So as Deb said, tonight's a work session, there's not going to be a vote. Instead, this evening's intended to be open dialogue, and the open dialogue is board and administration, right? So, we need to hear from you. I think you need to hear where some of our thoughts are at, and it's a work, truly a work session. So, the objective tonight is not a vote, but the objective is to move us more towards alignment on where are we going to be as a district on returning to school. We've received a lot of communication from parents in our community who have expressed the importance for them and their children to get back to school. Welcome, Vic. We've also heard from parents who are not comfortable sending their kids back to school this fall. So, I would suggest that we take some time at the beginning of this meeting to go around, around the room, including Zoom, and just hear your current thoughts. And one of the documents that, that I think is pretty important and just used as a base is some of the terminology from the CDC. And so as we go around the room, and I might suggest that we start with the administrative team, Mr. Beecher, then the principals. Uh, the CDC talks about lowest risk, students and teachers engage in virtual only, more risk, or highest risk. And I think one of the things we need to become aligned with is what level of risk are we willing to take? So, I anticipate that we're going to have a lot of questions, and I think we should be asking each other questions, but also in preparation for tonight, we asked Lesla White, who's the director of County, uh, Story County Public Health, to join us at 6 o'clock. So we've got 55 minutes right now to kind of go around the horn, have some dialogue together, and then Les is going to join us by Zoom, I believe. Is that right, Gail?
Yes, she has a plane.
And, and what I asked Les to do was, all right, talk to us a little bit about where the county is at with regard to a matrix, but also be available for questions that we have. Because I think we want to be working together with public health. It doesn't mean that, and what you're going to hear from her is she says, "We make recommendations, we're not going to mandate what you guys do." But, but I think it's important for us to be working with public health. So, she's going to join at 6:00. I might suggest we take the time we need for Q and A after that. Personally, I'd like to see us try to target wrapping up by 7:00, if not sooner, tonight. And that wrap-up will be what's next steps. And again, we're not making a vote tonight, but we need to be talking about next steps to the point where we are ready to, to vote, or to at least say, hey, this is how we're going to come back to school. So is everybody good with kind of that approach? And so then I might suggest we start with the administrative team. Um, I mean, just share at a high level kind of where you're at, and then we can go around the room with the board and, and have some dialogue before Les joins us. So, then do you want to start us off?
Sure. I was on the Health and Safety Committee, and I think if I look at it from a, I guess, a, a high level, uh, one of the things that we were going to try to do on that is, uh, we were going to try to look at, um, the mitigation strategies that we would have for that. One of those would be the social distancing, another one would be the plexiglass barriers, and another one would be the, uh, face coverings. And try to kind of in that order. Let's say that I'm coming into the classroom, and I can, uh, keep a social distance from, let's say, Vic, uh, I'm in a situation where I don't have to worry about the other parts of it. Plexiglass barriers, let's say that Deb and I are sharing one of the tables. Uh, we have the situation where, uh, we need to have, if it's less than six feet, we need to have that plexiglass barrier. And then, uh, if, if all else fails during transitions, I think that we wanted to look at face coverings. And I, I think that we're seeing that happen more and more. Um, again, just a, a high level view, we looked at it from the standpoint of, uh, fully remote learning, something in the middle which would be a hybrid, and then something that would be farther to the, I don't know if you say the left or the right, but, uh, that would be where we would have everyone back, uh, in a full-blown situation.
So, okay. Uh, Vic, you're here in person. You just walked in the door. We can either go to you, or we can start with somebody else that wants to raise their hand on Zoom, but we'd love to hear from, from everybody. Probably have Carrie do it, kind of right out. Amy's.
Oh, Amy's.
Hey, can I ask you?
Carrie, you know, she was in the phone.
Oh, go ahead, Amy.
No, go ahead. Oh, okay. Hello, everyone. Um, I want so badly to be back at school. All kids, all staff. That is my, um, biggest desire right now for multiple reasons. If we can figure out a way to do that as safely as possible, knowing that it's not going to be possible to be six feet apart. I don't think that's a reasonable expectation to think that we're going to be able to do. So I think as we continue to get more data and recommendations from the experts, if we feel like we can still be in maybe that middle risk category like you talked about, Tyler, that would definitely be my preference, allowing our parents the option to, you know, consider what's going to be best for their family. Um, you know, those that are, we heard them a couple of weeks ago, those that are uncertain and not comfortable with their children coming back. And so, making that accommodation, and as a ministry team, we would just need to figure out, we've got, you know, we've got really good meat to all three options from all the work that the committees did. And so I think that will set us up to be prepared with whatever option we choose or become forced to go to. But I think being able to offer in-person, as long as we have the proper mitigation in place. I know it's not going to be perfect. I mean, as things opened up, I think everybody knows things aren't perfect, and we may need to take a step back a little bit. And then offering some of that 100% revote if that is what some parents or families choose for their own health and safety.
So just to clarify, um, you're saying that it would be having both of those, if, if feasible? Having the kids that want to come back in person, but also for those that not have a virtual option?
Correct, which the department has already said, parents could choose that anyway to be an option, and schools would have an obligation to provide online learning. But I think it'd be important that, we've talked, you know, we talked a lot about how we're going to communicate it, how we're going to, how the messaging gets put out. Um, really, we want parents to feel comfortable. And our staff, we've got to think about our staff as well, feeling comfortable in coming back in-person.
Great.
Thanks, Amy.
Thanks, Amy.
Yeah.
Next, maybe?
It's like, Mike's got a handout?
Sure. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I think, um, I thought a lot about this recently. And if you'd asked me two weeks ago, I was pretty set. The admin team could tell you I was pretty set on, I think a hybrid sounds good. I think, um, it doesn't solve a lot of issues. I think there are still issues, and I think it creates some other issues. So I was pretty set on, I feel like we just need to come back with some safety, uh, procedures and precautions. Um, and, you know, and in the event that we have teachers or students get sick, then maybe we can move online, but, um, I'll be honest, last, you know, everything we've heard the last week or two, um, I, I really am at a loss anymore. Um, you know, I think Iowa, the numbers are still good, or relative, you know, to the, the country, but it does not sound like nationally it's moving the right way. And, uh, you know, that makes me nervous. I think a hybrid is, is difficult to do logistically. That's not a reason not to do it, but I do think it creates some problems for parents with childcare. Um, I think, you know, it impacts student learning, um, in my opinion. And I think, you know, um, I'm not sure of the benefits when it comes to student safety. You know, you see lots of data that maybe students, you know, um, school-aged kids, you know, aren't very susceptible, and, and maybe there's more data coming out here recently that says, you know, uh, that's not the case, I don't know, but, um, I guess, you know, I, I feel like we need to get the kids back, and we need to, um, you know, I think we can put in all the safety precautions except for social distancing. I think that's the one that's, that's just hard to, it's just hard to implement. Um, you know, and, and I think we even could look at things like, you know, increasing distance, maybe, you know, ensuring you have two feet, three feet, you know, maybe even four feet, but, you know, six foot, I can't do with all of the kids. Six foot's hard to do, what happens to kids? But I think I can make it work. Otherwise, I think all of those safety precautions, I'm all for. That probably didn't make any sense to you, because I'm not sure it makes any sense in my head. So I'm sorry if I just confused the, confused issue, but, but I'm, I'm, I'm not sure right now. Like I said, if you'd asked me two weeks ago, I, I felt pretty resolved.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Stacy, maybe you'll find that.
Yeah, I think, go ahead. So I think I kind of straddle between Mike and Amy. I also want nothing more than to have all the kids and all staff in the building on August 27th. I think there are many things we can do that we have in our plan for mitigation that we would be able to implement. I think the difficulty comes, as Amy mentioned, you know, with all the students, there just really is no way for us to social distance. So I think that, um, you know, depending on, if other mitigation things are in place, are we able to kind of forego the six feet? If we have masks, if we have plexiglass barriers? If we're just limiting movement throughout the building? So those are kind of my, my thoughts. But I also, you know, can echo what Mike says as well, in that, you know, that was, I, I, like Mike, at my, I was pretty resolved to say come back and, and just go with it. And then I think over the last couple of weeks, just, all of the new recommendations, a couple of different webinars we've sat in on, just some different things about mitigation. I just, you know, I think that will be questions we, as a group, need to answer.
Okay, thanks. Vic, you want to go, or you want to send me to?
Yeah, go ahead and go. I would echo a lot of what, what everyone else has said already. I have some huge concerns about full capacity to start out the year. I feel, uh, the saying is kind of proceed with caution. I think I would rather be safe than sorry. I'd rather start out, um, and know where things are versus saying, this is what we're going to do, and we're just going to move forward with that. It worries me a little bit. I spent a considerable amount of time over the weekend trying to see what six foot looks like in my classrooms. I looked at three foot. I can go from 12 to 20 kids. If I go to three foot, I can go to 20. So all of my classes are 26, 27, most of them are around that. So even at full capacity at three foot, that's tricky. Um, you know, we would need a lot of plexiglass barriers across the district. I have 17 classrooms with six-foot tables, so, you know, that's a barrier on every table in 16, 17 classrooms, and that's just the high school. Um, you know, I, I can do some things to my schedule, add a third lunch shift, that's still feeding 175 kids at three lunch shifts. So that's a concern. I would rather see us proceed with caution and be able to move faster than move fast and having to back up due to health issues. There's been 25 to 30 schools that have shut down baseball this summer. I wouldn't say it's been a glowing success across the state by any means. Um, we're all just one COVID case away from being shut down on every day. I know we can't control what kids do outside of school, but we can control a little bit of what they do. Movement in hallways would be hard with, you know, 500-plus students. Um, there are some things you can do with split hallways and things. I guess I would be in favor of wearing masks. I would be in favor of proceeding with caution and, um, taking all mitigation very seriously. We're learning more and more about this every day. Um, the reason we're not seeing a ton of cases is because we've not had students in large groups in the last four months. And, um, this would be the first big national trial of students in large groups to see how kind of things are going to go. I just worry about that. You know, and it may not affect their health like it affects adults, but I also have to advocate for our staff. I have to advocate for their families also, because they are going to go home to their families. Um, some of their families have, uh, immune, immune issues and compromised health issues. I just, I would encourage the board and their superintendent to proceed with caution. I will support whatever decision the board makes. I will implement whatever plan it is. Um, I just ask that we get time and resources dedicated toward making those things happen if we move to our full capacity to start the year.
Anything else Cindy, Cindy's on to add?
Uh, can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yep.
I'll just, I mean, I go a lot of what Vic and, Vic has said. He and I have talked a lot about this, of course. And I think for all of us, you know, if we can just simply have some plans in place, because we know today we are planning for something different than what it might be in, in five weeks when we start. And so if we, if we plan with a few different scenarios in mind, then I think we can at least be ready, more so than we were on March 23rd, or whatever it was. For example, so that we can plan so that when we have a case in our schools, whether it be a staff member, you know, we're ready. I know those are some of the things we're talking about tonight. I, um, it's hard to know today what we will go back to school to on August 27th. Right now, with everything that's going on in the nation, and with things that does seem like it'd be more responsible to be, to go back with a lot more precautions like Vic spoke about, I think it's helpful for us as we hear more stores, cities, and other organizations moving, moving forward with required masks, because that makes it more acceptable to have staff and students possibly come back with masks. And that will help us be able to do more in school of what we want to do, what we know is best for kids, and just have kids be in school. Just a couple additions. Thanks.
Carrie?
Um, I think that, uh, I'm really...
Mike can't say anything.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mike.
No, no, you go ahead. I already have, I can read, I'm just going to add something that I can read. Go ahead.
Um, I am probably going to err more on the side of caution. I, as Vic said, I, I am thinking of our students, but I'm also thinking of our staff. And if we all come back in, and, and we, people haven't been together for a long time, we could have how many staff out at once? And then, then we'll be in a bigger world of hurt, because we won't have, we might not have the sub-capacity. We've had, we've had subs contact us and write us letters telling us that, that they are not interested in subbing, unless we have certain precautions in place for them. Back to what Vic said, I think if you move slow, you can, you can get a better traction than going full board, and then all of a sudden, you've got to totally back up. And I, I guess I've come to the conclusion through this that I like to, to try to appease and make, you know, see how can we make people happy here? We can't make everybody happier. And ultimately, it's about the health and safety of our staff and our students. And so, I have to err on the side of more caution.
So before we go around the board, if I can just ask a question, because I guess I didn't clarify with each, and maybe that's where Mike was going, but... So when you say err, err on caution, and I heard that from Vic and Cindy, so what, from the return to learn, what option would you be recommending then?
Um, I would recommend depend, okay, there's twofold here. Depending on how many families that we have that say to us, you know what, we need to start the school up. We need to start remote learning.
We want our children?
We want our children at home because of health compromise, whatever the, I don't need to know what the reasons are. Depending on what those numbers are, that would determine to me, if, if I was, you know, the one making the decision, it would determine if we were in a hybrid model, or if we could go all here with those mitigation strategies in place that we know are important. The part that I'm struggling with, Tyler, is to say, I, I'm struggling with saying, I don't know if social distancing is possible. That's the part that I struggle with personally, in my own head. But that, like I said, I would say what Vic said too. I mean...
So let's talk in terms of occupancy, just with the idea, we don't know where people will fall out. But if we were to say, hey, everybody come back that wants to come back, what level of occupancy would you be like? I think that's an idea, with the idea of, we might have a hybrid just as a function of 49% of the people that say, I don't know, decide 25% of them don't come back. And so my question for you to help provide us with some clarity, these board members, would be, does 75% occupancy look like something? Or is it 60, or is it 50? But just kind of give us an idea when you say proceed with caution, to add to what that percentage would be on the hybrid. And I know it's just a guess, and you haven't had the time to think about it, but if we have three of every four kids that are normally here, or two of every four, I think just for the sake of what does hybrid mean, that would help me.
What, what, do you want to use, you've got to have one assumption in there. Do you want to use six feet social distance? You want to use one meter, which is what the WHO's is now? I mean, just going to talk about...
Which is approximately three feet, right?
Three feet, yeah.
Um, I...
I like that. That works, right?
I think that I... To me, that makes sense, because then I have a, I have an amount of space to think, okay, I got to think about three feet. I might think of a yardstick or whatever. If I say, ooh, I don't know if I can social distance, then everybody in this room is going to think of what is appropriate to them. Andrew and I might be totally unbased on what we think is appropriate. Deb and I could be, I could say this table is appropriate, and she could say sitting here together was appropriate. I think that, that, that's what I struggle with, Tyler, on that. I think if you have a hearted, okay, right now, we're going to say this amount. But that's me, so...
And I, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I think that's kind of where we need to get to in the conversation, is the level of risk in the district is going to say that's what we're comfortable with. Because ultimately, it gets down to that social distancing. But you asked the question, so Vic, if, from your comments, if you were to pick one of the options from return to learn, where would you be at today?
I think we have to talk, if we were talking full capacity, full board, starting out the year, there would have to be mitigations in place, obviously, and I would want to know what those were before I would commit to that. I mean, I, I think if we're going to be three foot away, are we talking three foot with a mask? Are we talking just three foot without masks? Um, I would want to be very clear, so then I know what I'm doing, and I'm consistent with what, what the message is from, from, from you guys. I do know that, you know, like I said, to answer John's question, six foot, it's 12 to 13 kids in the room. That's capacity at six foot. At three foot, um, when I did it this, this last weekend, you know, it jumps from 12 to 13 up to around 20, 22. You know, um, because of tables, take up a lot of space, and then you're putting kids on the ends, or you're putting a barrier in the middle that doesn't exist yet, right? So you're putting two kids at a table, but they have to be on opposite ends of the table, which takes up more space in the room. And you, I tried it a variety of different directions. Um, it gets tricky, you know, especially when your classes, some of your classes are 24 to 30. We got our two largest classes coming into the high school, 140 and 145. So, you know, when you break those down into six sections, that's getting right around 24 kids per class. You know, I think the other thing to discuss is having a portion of our kids that are online, and a portion, if we had a portion that were coming into the building eight hours a day, we're then asking our staff to manage two environments, you know, at once. They're going to be teaching 50% of the kids that aren't there, 50% of the kids that are. That's tricky. And it's working a lot of hours. You have to be very creative with how you're going to get that information to the students that aren't there. But, um, if I were to lean the direction, I would prefer us starting in more of a hybrid model and working toward full capacity when, um, whatever is the matrix allows us to do that.
Can I clarify one thing on that? And I should, I, you had a good point on that, Vic. If, we haven't really talked a lot about this, what remote, that families that do decide to go remote, because we know there's going to be families that decide that. That's going to look very different, even in a hybrid model. We can't, that, that learning is going to, is going to be just remote. So, we're going to have to look at staffing for that. We can't, just like Vic said, there's no way we can say, you're going to teach all these kids in a hybrid model, and then you've got to get to these kids over here. We're going to have to have separate staff, and that will depend on what grade level and who those kids are that are 100% remote. I think we're going to be creative with that. That's all I want to say.
And, and I will say that I, I, I mean, ultimately, I would want all of our students there if we could. We can do it safely, I want them there. I mean, ultimately, that's, that's what we do. We've been trained to do that. But you also got to understand that we've beat ourselves out of those straight rows for 50 years trying to get into collaborative environments, right? I mean, we built environments, we've got rid of individual desks. We've built these collaborative, we bought collaborative furniture. We've made these collaborative spaces. And so, this isn't natural to us to do that either. You know, and it, it takes a lot of work, but I would echo what Cindy says, is if we have a plan, give us the plan, and we'll get to work, and we'll do it. And, and we will, you'll have the support of everyone if, on the admin team, if we feel that we can safely, I also speak for me, safely bring staff and students into the building.
Any other final comments from admin, Mike? Yep.
I just was going to say, I think, and, and the admin team hasn't talked in a little overweight, probably. So, and people's feelings may change, but I think most of us are in agreement on most of the safety things. I think the big one is just the social distancing. I think if, if the board says we're going to require masks, great, we'll do it. The board says, you know, we're going to, we want temperatures taken. I mean, that will take some logistics to figure out, but, but we can do that. You know, all of those things we can do. And, and I sat down this afternoon, and, I mean, lifts, those and things. The, actually, the admin team, we kind of talked about this a couple of weeks ago, what might we do if we were, if we were all back? And I think there's a lot of things we can put in place for safety. So the big question is, can we, can we use social distancing? And I did not measure at three feet, and I'm glad Vic did, I did not do that. But I know at six feet, like, um, you know, even getting half, I'm not sure how we could do things like choir and band, so they probably wouldn't be face-to-face. They'd have to be online, because I don't have a space big enough to even get half of my choir and half of my band together. Even a half. So, um, you know, if, if, if we're going to implement social distancing, that means a hybrid. There's no way of getting around that. And, and if we do that, then there are just some classes that won't be able to meet face-to-face. And for me, band and choir would be, would be two examples. They'll have to be online. I just don't have, I don't have a space where I could do that even at six feet. And of course, you know, they're saying that possibly, you know, singing might be more than six feet. I don't know. I haven't heard a, a specific number on that. So if it needed any more than six feet, I for sure couldn't do it. But so I, you know, I think just in conversations with the admin team over the past few weeks, I think we're all in agreement that, you know, on, on most of the safety things, it just comes down to social distancing. If the board wants us to, to, to implement that or not, because that really will dictate hybrid or not.
Any other comments? Thanks Mike. So we got about 25 minutes till Les White calls in. If it makes sense, why don't we just share some thoughts from the board? And I'm gonna start over there and we're gonna put a cap on it.
Okay.
Deb?
Yeah. Yeah, so first I've had the opportunity to, to listen to a lot of our patrons, not by any means a majority, but a good, very good number that I think represent a diverse opinion about this. Class being, okay, not an educator, also not a healthcare professional, but doing the best with the information that we have available, right? I get it. In class, that's what we do, we do well. And having kids here, you know, that, that makes sense. That's in line with, I think, a lot of what I'm hearing from, from others as well. Mitigation has never once been up for discussion for me. Never once. We follow, I don't create guidance. And so therefore, I don't feel right about dissecting and choosing what guidance I follow and what I don't. That is something that I think we have to leave to people who are best suited. We had two physicians come to talk to us. I've had numbers of physicians who think otherwise email. So we have, to say that there is a gamut of, of opinions, yes, the guidance is pretty clear, right? Uh, right now, our numbers look good. So I'll just say this based off of what our numbers look like now, right? I mean, I say good, like you said, Mike, in, in whatever good looks like nowadays. Our town is half the size that it will be in two weeks. We know that it's going to take probably another couple of weeks or so to understand what impact that has on our community. I don't believe you, I, I would echo what I have heard from others in that, um, once the horse is out of the barn, how do you get him back, right? I get that's an unpopular decision. I get, I mean, I get that's an unpopular opinion. My behind is in this chair and that's what I say. For the sake of our staff, we have heard that, that kids don't suffer the effect. I'm not saying that right, correctly, as much as maybe adults. That's the, that's the thinking now. I have found zero evidence that says they don't transmit it or that we know they don't transmit it. And to me, the quickest way to online learning are, is when our teachers get sick. So I prefer to play the long game here and think about what we can do to start and let weather that first storm of all sorts of kids coming back into our, our town, weather that and then, and ramp up. I think that's where we wanna be is, uh, I, I think we will, we will have, for as long as this situation persists, we will have a bit of a hybrid in that, what I've understood from parent emails is that some just will, are going to select online, regardless of what our mitigation is here. They're, they're gonna select online. So there will be this like dual stream, if I can call it that, effort. I, I struggle. So I guess I'm, I'm coming down on probably a side that's more conservative. I don't, I don't know how to let the, get the horse back in the barn if things go sideways. And I would argue that, you know, but what I mean by that is starting out fast and then maybe running into a number of issues and then having to back out if that. So, did I answer, was that clear, what I said? Mitigation, and I mean, and I believe based off of what I've heard, that stacking mitigation works the best. In other words, it's not just social distancing. And if you don't have social distancing masks, I think that social distancing isn't always going to be possible. We shouldn't be ridiculous about it. But I think that whenever possible, we should combine mitigation.
So Deb, are you closer to just going online for the start of the school?
No, I would say hybrid. I would be more leaning towards a hybrid. And I, like I said, depending on what our parents respond, that might be what our, I, I like to think of a, a fourth choice, to be honest, John, like, um.
Parents, parents' choice. Almost like a parents' choice.
It's kind of like a parents' choice.
Which I think will be hybrid no matter what. We don't know what the mix is, but is the question I think will be, is do we offer it? Everybody the opportunity, which could be, you know, whatever occupancy and everything, but.
Instead of A B A B, meaning like half the students are in the class, you know, they're all halftime in the building, it would be those that are comfortable with the mitigation that we have addressed, that they can come and the ones who are not comfortable, whether that be because they think our mitigation is too strict or too lenient, they can move about. So in that way, it is, it is hybrid, but hopefully getting as close to more hours in the classroom as possible. Did that help? So that, that's my opinion, as, as one member of the board.
Yep. Andrew?
Yep, I mean, I'm, I'm all, I wanna do what we can to open up our schools in the safest way possible. So I mean, and I say that meaning mitigation, I, I, there is no mitigation steps that I'm not for. I'm, I'm for all, like you said, the more the merrier. I'm not, I'm for masks, I'm for, I'm for everything. You know, we, we hybrid is such a unique model. The hybrid model, the A B A B model, I am not for, just personally. And I say that to me, and again, I'm not educator, so I, I, but from looking at the outside, we have the exact same problems on the same plate. We just mixed them around. Nothing, nothing's gone away. And so I look at it like, again, now this parents' choice hybrid, now that's a whole different, I'm all for that. Because again, we're, we're gonna do what we can. If it works out to get the kids back, but then the kids don't wanna send them, we gotta have a plan, you know, option to teach them as well. Obviously, online, again, you may be for, to me, if we don't try to get these kids back in the fall, I don't think we're gonna get them back all year. That, that's in my head. So we have to make an effort to try to get them in here. So we say to not bring them in, again, my, that whole A B in my mind is just, it's messy. If we say, okay, we go online, I just don't see them coming back this, this next school year, in my head. So that's kind of where I, I wanna say, let's see what we can do the best way possible. Again, any mitigation effort we can put forward, we're gonna, I feel I wanna do and nothing is off the table. I want, again, as you both said, my worry is not as much as the kids, it is the staff. I worry about the staff and that's who I wanna make sure we protect.
So I, I, you know, from, I spent this weekend trying to find out, you know, of the spike in Florida, how many of those were, were school age children? Trying to find out, okay, of the 70, 70,000 that have just been added to the rolls tested positive in Florida, how many of those, those folks were hospitalized? I don't know if it's a reliable number, but the number I got out of the last, last 70,000 cases that were tested positive, 170 were hospitalized. So trying to get some idea of, you know, and then not just being numbers driven and to have the emotional intelligence of this is a big deal for a lot of people, including myself. I have a special needs daughter who will not wear a face mask. And so the idea is, is this is, I'm gonna eat my own cookie here with whatever we decide. But, but what I would say is, is I, as I see it, is, is we need to prioritize the safety of our educators. Because the fact is, is we have no online, we have no in person, unless we really rally the troops and we keep the teachers as safe as we possibly can make them. And now, that being said, is, is I don't think that this can be consistent across our schools from the standpoint, I don't think it's realistic for our elementary age children to be wearing masks and know to stay three feet apart. And I think with regard to the elementary, it's more about how do we keep our teachers as safe as possible? Uh, because the kids are going to be, matter of fact, I got firsthand experience. I have a nine-year-old and we're at church and he's sneezing in his mask at church. And after church, he looks at, at my wife and says, I'm not wearing that mask anymore. And so I just have this vision of the elementary being a very difficult thing to manage. And so we really need to focus on how do we keep the teacher safe? I don't think we're gonna be able to get substitutes. And so as soon as these teachers are sick, we're gonna have to have Plan B. And so I'm, I'm, I would be, I'm okay with learning from other people's mistakes, but this is a virus and we're going to be dealing with this and we're gonna have classes that get it and we're gonna have to send them home for two weeks. And we're going to have to be able to make the best of some difficult things. And we're, we're gonna have to have this high level of patience. The patience that this next school year is gonna take is going to be incredible. And so I appreciate Tyler, what you're putting together here because this helps us build our patience in that we're not gonna, this is gonna be a very difficult thing to, to, to come out with on how we should do this. But, but at any rate, what I would be for is, is I think, you know, you know, you gotta, you gotta kind of throw it up into the wind, but I would be as quickly as possible, let's, let's get some definition around who wants, who's gonna be online no matter what. I would say let's come back with, with three feet social distancing for the high school and the intermediate school, wearing, wearing masks and putting up Plexiglas. And then, you know, doing the best we can to lower the risk as much as we can. But I think we need to be teacher centric and really put our focus on, on keeping the teachers safe. I think the kids, for the most part, are, are, are going to, you know, will be sending classes home with the idea of we had an outbreak in this class, so they need to go home. We'll see you in two weeks and then we have to figure out, you know, what that looks like. We might have a cadre of teachers that have pre-existing conditions that alls they do is online, from the standpoint of they can't take the risk to be in a classroom, so let's utilize them to take the kids that are gonna be out for two weeks. And it's not gonna be perfect, it's gonna be messy, but we're just gonna do the best we can. But I believe with all my heart that we're doing these kids a disservice unless we get them in person. And, and I fully understand that parents that say, I just, that's just not a risk I wanna take. And I fully understand teachers saying, it's just not a risk I wanna take. But for the people that are willing to take those risks, I think we have to come to an agreement as a board of here's the risk that we're willing to take on. And then we, we set that and then parents will be able to know of, yes, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to send my kid to that environment or no. But before we even get to the parents, we have to say, with this framework in mind, are we gonna have teachers in the classroom? And then what does it look like when one of those teachers gets sick? Then if one of those teachers is sick, then we, all of a sudden, we gotta have 50 kids online because we don't have enough teachers that we have to even send another classroom home so that we can cover 50 students with one teacher. And, and it gets ugly, I mean, from there. But I think if we have good patience and we just work our way through, and it's not gonna be ideal, but I do believe we get a lot closer to the ideal if we get the students back in the classroom. And so, so I'm gonna favor the idea that gets the students in the classroom, knowing that we're gonna have to back up anyway. So when Iowa State students get back here, it's gonna look just like the news from Florida this weekend. 21-year-olds are gonna spike and we're gonna have all kinds of people that are getting COVID. And then we gotta say, what's the matrix that, that we go back online? But for my own children, I would much rather have my children in school for two weeks and then go to back online because at least they got two weeks better of education than they would've got otherwise. That being said, I'm also good with, you know, learn from others' mistakes. But what I feel really is for parents and for them, their ability to plan. If you have two working parents, how in the world, how in the world are we, we gonna do this? You know, from the standpoint of particularly when, when there's not a lot of flexibility in their work schedule. So that, that, that's the, the main things, I think.
I did a lot of reading this weekend or last week or so. And the thing that I've noticed the most when everything I saw, I went, was with the Des Moines participation on, uh, end of last year. And what, what got me the most was when they went online, the kids from nine to 12th grade spent less than four hours a day on return to learn on video. And what, and I thought that was actually, to be honest with you, pretty good. And then it went from like six to eight and down to second grade and two and under. And when you get to two and under, it was less than 30 minutes. And then the sixth and second grade were, and I'm gonna get the numbers a little bit wrong, uh, one hour and 30 minutes on the learning online. And then the sixth to eighth was an hour, took 30 minutes of learning online. Now, I don't do that to beat up on Des Moines. I do that because I'm a big proponent of large population to decide, you know, what the real life looks like, you know? As much as I like to say we're Gilbert and we're all by ourselves, this is a regional issue. This is something that's gonna happen to everybody around us and we should open up and we should watch everybody else what they do too. And we should share. This is a time when we should share. I don't think you settle for poor participation. I mean, I think, you know, on, if you had the online learning, you would have to have some sort of way of grading them and so that changes. So those numbers would change. You know, I, I think like John and Deb and Andrew, we need barriers on for the teachers. But we need to start the barriers last week. Okay, we can't sit here and talk about barriers every week. We need to have the guys in the shops go out there and start cutting the glass, Plexiglas and putting it on their desks. We need to start last week. Whatever, whatever, whatever we do, and I'm gonna leave it up to the administration. I, I'm, I'm gonna do what they tell me because they're the ones we hire to do this. Whatever we do, you're gonna have to understand masks are the deal. Because everything I read all weekend is you can do all the mitigation you want, but you can have more people in your room if you have masks. You can have, you know, you can have people go to football games if you have masks. So everything I read is you have, have the mask. What's wrong with the masks? Well, the wrong thing with the mask is you start breathing in the carbon dioxide, right? You're putting it on the mask, you're breathing it back in, then what happens? Well, then your, uh, blood pressure goes up, right? So if we have some sort of mechanism behind them, that if this is a teacher's desk and we have Plexiglas, they can go recoup, they can go sit and be in their own world and be okay. Okay, we need that. But whatever we do, it's gonna be masks. Two and hundred aren't gonna wear masks. There's not good. But the teachers have to wear masks. The administrators of the building have to wear masks. And, and I guess, like I said, I'm gonna leave it to you guys. I mean, you guys are out there on the front. You know what Des Moines is doing, you know what Ballard is doing, you know what Story City is doing. We should know what everybody's doing and we should be similar because it is a regional issue. Why is Florida in such an impact right now? Well, two weeks ago was 4th of July. So when everybody did the 4th of July, they went to beach, right? Beaches were packed. What'd we do 4th of July? Well, if we're going up to Clear Lake, they canceled everything, right? We didn't have aims, aims to cancel everything. Why are we better than some of the other places? Because we're still doing the right things, even though we're not going to beach and we're not doing 4th of July. So we're on the right road. We just gotta keep doing the right things. And, and, and one other thing I'd like to say is, is the parents have really gotta start doing as a parent. We cannot, we can teach your kids all day long what to read, write, math, all that. But the parents are gonna have to take the temperatures at home, period. I mean, there's no way we can have somebody, like Vic says, can you imagine if school buses getting off and all the kids walking in? We have teachers out there taking temperatures. Disaster. So we're gonna have to be a partnership with the parents. And it's gonna have to be a one-to-one deal where they count on us, but hey, we're counting on you too. Because I'm all about putting the kids back in the school. I think that's part of learning, okay? But it's not gonna be the same. And I never thought about, like John said, maybe you get a, maybe you get somebody where you gotta send a whole classroom. You know what, that might be better than sending half a classroom because then you're all online learning, you know? So, you know, that's a really good thing to think about that I never thought, never read about it for the last week and a half. You know, and then you come to like choir and band. And, you know, I hate to say it, but you know, choir and band, the way I look at it this year is maybe there's gonna be a lot of small groups, 10 and less. Uh, I would think that with the choir and band, you're gonna have a lot of individual teaching with the instructor and tour, maybe the cornets or the trumpets, however you say it, the clarinets, where you can do less than 10. But band and chorus can be different. Doesn't mean it goes away. We might not ever see them sing as a big group, but it doesn't mean they don't get the experience choir and band. Because we had two great teachers. I mean, our choir and band teacher is the best in the district. So I guess with all that said, I, uh, here, here's, here's how I look at it.[1769.56] So I guess with all that said, I, here's, here's, here's how I look at it. I don't want one person sick from COVID out of the school. I don't know if that's going to happen. I surely don't want one person to have fatal because of COVID out of our school. How do we do that? I don't know if we can. I don't know if we could look at the parents and say, we're going to send your kids back, we're going to do everything we can, but you know, they're not going to get sick. I can't say that. This is where we are today. But I think we have to start tomorrow or last week, start doing some things now, or we're going to be high A-ball. And for sure, we got to keep the teachers healthy. There you go.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. So I'll wrap up, then we might have a couple of minutes and then Les will join us on Zoom. But I guess I, where I'm coming at is we do need to make a decision. Because the clock is ticking. I think all we can do right now is make the best decision with the best information we have today and then be prepared to that things may change. But we've got to start putting a target out there for this is how we're going to come back to school and start, as Jeff said, really knocking it out to get ready. Me personally, I really like what the American Association of Pediatrics put together, the Academy of Pediatrics. And they, they very clearly state, they strongly advocate, policy considerations for this coming school year start with a goal of having students physically present in the school. And where I come out is, I think that should be the driving force for where we're going. I love what I heard from several of the administrators is that it ends up being the parents' choice. But we have to describe what the in-person scenario looks like for parents to make that choice. And with regard to mitigation tools, I'm with you 100%, Andrew. We use all of them that we have at our disposal. I further think that it, the district needs to say, in general, this is our level of risk we're willing to take. This is the target we're going to set for August 27. And I think then we leave it to the individual buildings, the principals for each building to build your unique plan, consistent with those goals, but knowing that age differences do dictate what you need to do for mitigation. And above all, everybody, I think from the board has said that, keep the staff's safety in mind. So I think there's a lot of mitigation tools that we can use. I think we should use them. I think some parents have already told us they're not going to send their kids back. Maybe there'll be others, once we put a plan out there that say not. But the sooner we can have a plan and know who's coming, who's not, the better prepared we'll be. So again, we're not making any decisions tonight. So it's, it's sharing. I guess we've gone around the horn from the board. We've got about six minutes before Les joins and she can also talk about the matrix. In other words, what are some of the triggers? Because I visited with her briefly on Friday and I was kind of surprised. I was actually kind of ready for one positive and you shut everything down. That's, that's not where they're coming from. So we can ask her, or maybe you were on the call. Do you want to share a little bit about COVID?
They did not go into those numbers, but what they do is they use something called, what did I tell you that was Lindsay positive?
Positivity rate?
Yes.
Test analysis?
And my understanding of that is, they didn't go in, but you're exactly right. It's not going to be, oh, three, three cases in Story County and we're shutting. It's, it's looking at how many, how many tests were given, how many came out positive. And then from that, that we don't have historical data kept in Story County. We, not we, I'm using we very generally. Story County superintendents are going to start keeping that data now. And actually Matt Patton from Story is going to do, is keeping that data starting on Friday. As to, I think Friday was 3.9% positivity, from the positivity analysis. So he's going to keep that, he's going to track that now. So then you look and they said, I want to say it was like maybe 5% is when you want to start, oh, okay, now we're going to start looking at it. But they said like 3.9. We had Amanda Deardorff from, Mary Greeley was part of that as well. And she said, you know, right now, with the mitigation strategies that they're using at the hospital, they haven't had any hospital employees that have come down with COVID. But they're, they're, you know, they're making sure, I think what you said, stacking those mitigations. But that goes to speak to the mitigations as well. So they didn't have a hard and fast number of, at this point, you're going to shut down. But what they are going to do is they're going to put some data together and then the superintendents are getting together again on Friday, this coming Friday. And they will, they, Ames generously said that they would put that, put it together in a nice neat package so that then they could all look at it to see how that would look for a matrix. But they use the analogy of, you know, thinking about how superintendents do the weather right now with bad weather. Okay. You want, you've got a matrix for like, oh, what is, what does the forecast look like? What do the roads look like? I would say the same thing is going to come of this as well.
Now Carrie, was that positivity rate for, for school-aged children?
No, it was for the, no, they, it was for the whole county, just population in general.
Interesting.
Let's, let's hold back for Les White.
See, those are good questions that you need to ask.
Seems like that would beat a whole row.
Yeah.
Because you get an outbreak and you get an outbreak in a nursing home.
So, you know, we'll come, we'll come back to that. So we've got a couple of minutes.
Yeah, Vic, have you, have you seen some of the stuff I read where, do you think your schools, or even Mike, you and, and I know the girls get it done because of age difference, but do you think the kids will follow direction in hallways? The people go one way down the right side, one way down the left side and stay in a single line?
I feel confident that, I mean, we've got smart kids, we've got responsible kids. I think they'll follow what we ask them to do.
I mean, I've read that a lot.
You know, I think, I think they will. I feel, I feel good about that. We have good families that will.
Do you think that's something you would look at?
I think we'd have to. I mean, you know, if you, if we are full capacity and, you know, even if, let's say 25% don't come back.
Right.
You're still talking, you know, 400 kids.
Okay, she good? Les, Les, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you just fine.
Very good. Les, we've got our entire school board and administrative team and you can probably sort of see most of us. But we've just, we've just gone around the horn and talked a little bit about where we're at with regard to our comfort level, and which I think has been very good. We'd like to shift now to be, hear a little bit from you on what the current county recommendations are, a little bit more maybe on the matrix, and then if, if time allows, some, some questions for you.
Okay, Les, before you start, this is Deb Wardall. I just want you to know too, that not only are you on Zoom, but we also stream this live on YouTube. So I just, she's not been a part of our meetings before and I just wanted you to know that, Les.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'll just start a little bit about where we are right now in the county as far as our cases. Our cases were down last week. We're, right now, we're on a little bit of a downward trend. We're seeing, maybe where, today was a very slow day, we only saw about five cases. Last week though, we were running about 12 cases a day. We had 75 total for last week. The age groups that we are seeing, still the leading age group that we are seeing is 18 to 25. I will tell you though, that the age group from, I, I divided out a little bit further if you look at IDPH on their website, they go from 18 to 40. But because we have university, we felt, I felt it was important that we really look at a, a little bit more detail with that. And I also look at age groups from zero to five and then five to 16. And that was just a request of Dr. Passion. So that 18 to 25, that was still leading this week in relationship to our number of cases. We are seeing though, an increase a little bit. The next group was at 18 to 40. So we're seeing some activity in there. We also last week did see some activity in that older adult. They go up to like 60 to 80, even greater than 80. And that was because we are having, seeing an outbreak in one of the nursing homes in the county. So that would attribute to that as well. Last week, as far as our deaths, we did have two additional deaths. In the county, over the weekend, we had three additional ones. I will tell you that those are all nursing home related. So the county totally have eight. And when you're looking at how many cases we have, well, I think that's not such a bad So what we, what we recommend, I know I did send out the mitigation guidance that the board helped put out. And that mitigation really talks about pre-K, 312 is what was recommended that when I resumed in the fall, that all staff should be required to wear face coverings at all times when there are line students. And face covering should be considered on students as applicable. We know that that could be a challenge to keep face coverings on some children, especially the younger children. Also, social distancing in the classes, which I'm sure you talked about as well. And when we're looking at contacts, what we look at is anybody that has been less than six feet for greater than 15 minutes in contact with somebody that has a positive COVID test or maybe they went and had a test, maybe like get that test Iowa site, and they come back and they have a positive test, but they're asymptomatic. Then we look at 48 hours prior to that test date. So we're looking, we ask them, who live in a contact with less than six feet, greater than 15 minutes for the previous 48 hours with asymptomatic symptoms or that test date. So those are the individuals that we're looking at. That's why the social distancing continues to be of importance to everyone as well. There was some recommendations too, when you look at trying to keep smaller groups, keeping your classrooms together, decrease the amount of time that they change classrooms, having them even a month in their classroom, those types of things. The screening, touchers, both the staff and the children. I know we've talked to some other schools and maybe going to have your parents do some of that screening at home before they come, but I would consider thinking about that for your staff as they enter the building. When I talked to Dr. Passion about this, of course hand washing too, very important, you know, hand washing and having that availability. But when I talked to Dr. Passion in relationship to the schools, he said that he really, for all of you, he would be concerned about your teachers probably more than the students. And the reason for that is we haven't necessarily seen a lot of COVID in the, in that age group. So again, we have very few in the zero to five. Actually this week we had none. And we had two in that age group from six to 17. But the teachers are in that age group that may be more at risk. So he suggests that you do have a list of substitute teachers that you can take over. Also, what he was talking about, in, for those of you I understand, there was somebody on the call last Friday with me, not with some of the superintendents. But one of the recommendations that Dr. Passion said too, is maybe 10%. If you have 10% of your students out with a positive COVID test and your symptoms, then that may be a point where you would want to look at, you know, maybe closing the school or doing something a little bit different. Now I will tell you, anything that I say tonight, I just make recommendations. It's up to you guys to make those decisions. So those were just some thoughts that have been put out there. So is there anything else that you're interested in in relationship to what's going on in the county?
What's the concerns when the students come back? Obviously it's going to change dynamic of the county and obviously of Ames. What's your concerns there when all the students come back in the next three weeks?
Iowa State students.
Iowa State students, sorry.
Well, yeah, all students are coming back in August. August should be an interesting month. We've been working with Iowa State in relationship to the return of students. I will tell you, they do have a pretty good plan in place. They, for those students that will be entering their housing, they are planning, and I didn't get an opportunity to talk to you during today, but as of still the end of last week, their plan was to test everybody that's coming into their housing. So they have a plan and they're working on that to get that implemented. And I believe that they have students coming in, they're staggering the way that the students are coming in. And they actually believe bring those students in that first week in August. So like they'll bring a group in, they'll test them, I get those tests back, they're going to use the VADMED lab there, get the tests back in a timely fashion. And then if there are students that need to be isolated, they have set aside specific wards to, for that isolation to take place, then, then they'll bring in the second wave of students and do the same thing. So they're hoping to capture those students that are sick or test positive and get them quarantined before they can expose to the other folks. Now they also have a nice contact tracing system set up where even if you are off campus, of course, you can report that maybe you're symptomatic or have, feel, not feeling well. You can go into T L and get tested and then they will follow up. And then they are going to monitor those students that have symptoms or a positive testing for 14 days. So are there, you know, there's always, probably we, may see an uptick in relationship to the testing, but I, I do feel pretty confident, we've been working with them pretty closely in what their plans are for that return. So does that help a little bit on how that will handle?
No, thank you.
Les, can I ask you a question? This is Lindsey Beecher, superintendent at Gilbert. I wasn't able to be at the, with you guys on the first call on Friday, but I know that one of the things that we've talked about as far as Story County superintendents is to find that matrix or that protocol of when we might shift from one level to another. Is that something that's going to be happening from either Story County Public Health or Mary Greeley?
Yeah, so what, we did talk about that. And in relationship, what I would recommend is visiting maybe with Jenny Reisner from Ames. And they're starting to put that together. We talked about, you know, the importance of looking at the community and one of the ways to look at the community is if you go on the Iowa Department of Public Health website, you have to click, you can bring up coronavirus.org. You click on that and then that brings up a map of Iowa. And then you click right on Story County. And when you click on Story County, that gives you data specific to Story County. And one of those data points is actually a percentage of people positive. And one of the things that really, really looks at with that is where you're at percentage-wise. And if you're at 5% or below for 14 days, that means you're in a pretty good state. You know, things have calmed down in your county and there's not a lot of COVID activity. If you're running above 5%, then that's kind of painting a different picture for you. So unfortunately with that number, you can't go back like the, the previous 14 days. So it's kind of a manual calculation. And there was one of the individuals in the group, and I apologize, I don't remember which one, but they were going to start, I mean, had to kind of calculate that. And then, and then they were also looking at that 10% that I mentioned from, I could ask, you know, remember those talked about that may, I mean, you know, those are schools kind of being on the sides and things like that. So I know that there is that activities going on. And then I believe we are set to meet again, and I don't know that it's this week, but maybe next week, just kind of review those matrix forms.
Les, we have a question. Jeff Mosman from the board. What is, you said, I have two questions. The first one is on that response to, the first question was, you said in a timely manner on finding out the outcomes, has that changed any from the three to four day time span?
Test results.
Yeah, test results, yeah.
It's not working, Les. I'm at home, it's the, it happened, I apologize. I think I made a mistake, I'm ready. I think I made the question, I'm ready.
Can she hear us?
Yes, she can.
Yeah, I said, you mentioned that you were going to get results in a timely manner Iowa State was for being tested. What is a timely manner today?
Yeah, it really depends on where you get tested and the type of test that you have. If you're going to go to, the thing that we're running into, like with Test Iowa, is right now Test Iowa seems to be very busy. So sometimes it could be a day or two before you can even get an appointment to go get tested. Then if you get in with Test Iowa, we've seen about a two-day turnaround. That's really not too bad. If you go to McFarley Clinic, to the upper respiratory, you get tested right away. Again, we're seeing about a two-day turnaround with that. Now, there is some testing that is, though we don't have a lot of it, like at Mary Greeley, there is a rapid test. The problem with that is it's not readily available, unfortunately, because, you know, that would be an ideal situation, if you had somebody sick at the school, you could test them and you'd have that result back in 45 minutes. But I know Mary Greeley struggles to get that test every week, and we're only allotted about 120. So they use those kind of sparingly for some of those cases. Now, there is a new one that Mary Greeley is starting to use, it's a saliva test, Cortiva, is, I believe they're out of Johnston, and it's a saliva test, and they started using that last week. And that turnaround time is next day, I believe. You know, it's off to a little bit of a rocky start, but it seems like now it's, they're getting it down, and our interfaces are working with our lab, and I believe that they're getting it back the next day. They're using those in particular with pre-op patients, because we need to test our pre-ops before they have surgery. So they're, they just begin using that. So some different options out there for testing, but pretty standard, about two days.
All right, and then to follow up with that, is your, have you guys put any thought into what it looks like for the schools to go through something like this? I mean, are we going to have maybe our nurses get some education or help with what it looks like if we have a problem at the school? I mean, where we can report directly to something, or if there's an avenue where you guys looked at and said, hey, all the schools should do this, and here's how it's done?
At this point in time, we are still waiting from IDPH. I was hoping I would have it today, but I don't, particular guidance on how, and usually in their guidance, they're going to tell us exactly those types of things, you know, how that testing is going to occur, what role we're going to play in that, you know, can we release if we find that there's a positive test, going back and talking to the school and those kinds of things. But I don't, I haven't got that yet. It's been promised to us now for a little bit, so I'm hoping, I'm hopeful that we get that this week. We too are planning, tomorrow we're going to be scheduling a meeting with your school nurses, the school nurses in the county, yours will be invited as well, and we can talk a little bit about those issues, about testing, and, you know, the isolation of the students, where importantly, we want to make sure that your school has enough PPE to manage those kinds of things. So I know I didn't answer your question correctly, and I apologize, but I don't necessarily have a great answer to that today.
No, I think you did very well, thanks.
Les, this is Tyler. Question, today, do you do contact tracing? Do you trace back for all positives in the county? And the second part of the question is, what would that look like if we start back in school, whether it's 50% or all the kids? What does that look like in a school setting?
Yeah, so I have a relatively small department, when you look at our county, I only have two other nurses besides myself, and I do happen to have some other responsibilities at Mary Greeley as well. So at the point where we were having over 100 cases a week, I needed to turn that over to the Iowa Department of Public Health. They have people that they contract with right now, it's the National Guard, and then during the process of hiring people. So they do that contact tracing for us. So what they do do, it's just like what we did before we turned it over, is you contact the individual with a positive test, and then you ask who they've been in contact with, like I mentioned before, you ask for their name and their phone number, and then you do call each of those individuals as well, and provide the education about, you know, isolating for the next 14 days, what those signs and symptoms are. And if you've had a positive exposure to a positive folk, then you can go ahead and get tested at Test Iowa as well. So all of that is done. I would envision that there would be, that would happen like that in your school. So let's say, maybe you have a student that happens to have a college-age sister who gets to break that home, and that they develop COVID. So then what we would do, and this is the part, I'm not sure if it's going to be us as Iowa Department, or as Story County Public Health, because I will tell you, right now we manage our own nursing homes, we take care of all of that, and maybe they will stay the same with the schools, that we'll take care of our schools within our county. But we would contact the students' parents, since they would be of age, and then we would go back and see, you know, what students that they've been in contact with. This is where, again, I'm not exactly sure. My guess is that then we will, you know, contact the school as well, and because there may be some individuals or some students, I envision maybe not necessarily knowing who all their student has been in contact with for that amount of time and less than six feet. So that would be the point that we would contact the school, then we have to go through your students and that type of thing. So could get labor intensive is my guess.
Can I add on to that? Les, are you saying then that the contact tracing would come back to the individual school district to do that?
At this point in time, I do not know that. It could either, it's either going to be, my guess is that either we, as Story County Public Health, will play a part in that, or the Iowa Department of Public Health will play a part in that. I'm just saying, my guess is, we're going to have to contact the school at some point, because I just feel like the parents won't necessarily know all of the student contacts that that student has had. So that doesn't mean that you guys have to do all the contact tracing or the notification. I'm just saying that this is my best guess at this point, is at least we're going to have to contact you to figure out who all needs to be contacted. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you. Les, I have a question for you. Would it be reasonable, because I'm thinking of the contact trace, but do you think it would be financially reasonable that, I have it, and I'm in a class of 20, or say, only two-thirds of them there, so I'm in a class of 20 kids, I've just been tested positive for it. Would these saliva tests by Cortiva be available, that we could just give one of those to the whole class, deliver that to Mary Greeley, and have the test back the next day?
I can't speak for Mary Greeley lab, but I think that something like that may be possible.
Because I think it would probably take less time to get the whole classroom tested than it would be to try and figure out who all, now that wouldn't mean that, hey, who outside the classroom, but boy, it gets a whole lot easier when you say, hey, we've got the class checked, and if nothing else, then we, at least it would be like, okay, as far as what we know today, we've tested all the kids, and all of the ones that tested positive have been sent home.
Right, right. The one thing I do want to, I just want to remind people that once you've had exposure, you can develop symptoms anywhere from two to 14 days. So you could test the kids on the, you want to wait at least two days before you test them, you tested kids, and you could test them maybe on day four, day three or four, they're negative. That doesn't necessarily mean that they're still not going to develop symptoms up until day 14. But if you would test everybody, you would know, hey, you know, everybody at this point is negative. You're going to know to be looking for symptoms. We can help your nurses, or your nurses will talk about what you're looking for, what the students are looking for, and the parents are going to know what they need to be looking for as well. So I don't want to give you that false sense of insecurity that at day three, everybody's negative, wearing the clear, because that isn't necessarily always true.
But Les, given what we know now, when would be the best time to get that test? So I have, we have a confirmed case in this classroom, when would be the best time to test the rest of the children? Would that be at the same time, or would that be two days later? Talk to me about that.
Yeah, what they recommend, what the Iowa Department of Public Health does recommend is wait two days, at least two days before you get tested. So if you were, if I was exposed to some symptoms today, I'd wait two days before you get that test.
And so then I would assume that the students are home? Is that, Les, this is, I don't know the answer to that.
No.
Les, this is Deb Ordell. I have a question that I want to run by you, because I think in my mind, I made up this matrix to be like the all-knowing, all-telling thing, and I believe I'm wrong about that. So with this matrix that you're talking about, within the next week or so, right, Story County matrix, is going to be for the county, right? So you're measuring, and please, if I'm wrong, like, stop me, but a matrix that we develop is for a larger population. So this is where we're looking at 5% for greater than 14 days. This is when we're talking about county-wide mitigation or something. This matrix is not going to be to the level that will help a school or a school district to make specific decisions about when to move from this model to another. Like, I'm talking about per school district. Does that make sense, my question?
That would be correct. That would be looking at, as I see it, that would be looking at county-wide. So, you know, I'm sure you guys probably track, though, the number of students, and their illnesses and different things like that. So those would all be trends I would think that you would look at to see where you're at with your students. And again, I think that some of the activity that the superintendents, they're kind of working on that together.
Yeah, and so that would be, again, guidance that is not coming from Story County Public Health or Iowa Public Health, but then this consortium like our superintendents, who are supposed to interpret.
General guidance for populations.
General guidance for populations and apply that to a much smaller.
Subset.
Subset.
And that's why I remember.
Which the math gets a little bit.
But that's probably the purpose of working together as a consortium and partnering with Story County, but also Mary Greeley in helping with that data.
And so, and my question is, it's more about support, right? So like, I understand you've got a small department, two people, and I know our return to learn says, if we have specific questions, we're supposed to reach out to two individuals at Mary Greeley. So we're one of how many schools in the county? Nine, 10 districts, I think, in the same community as Iowa State, all of this? Two? What, is there an avenue, or where do we go when we just have, simply have questions that we need specific guidance about a particular situation, how to, maybe looking for that, that healthcare guidance?
Us, you would call us.
But there's only two people, and that's for everybody?
Yeah, that is for everybody, and so far, we've been able to manage all of our businesses, all of our nursing homes, and I would foresee that we can handle all of the school questions as well.
Okay, like within a certain service level, agreed upon timeline that we would do within so many hours or whatever? Okay, thank you.
Uh huh, and for sure, if we're not meeting those needs, maybe we can let me know.
Okay, but you're available. I mean, you're available for that, is I guess my concern was that we do have that support.
No, we would be available for that, and I will tell you, if we don't have the question, we don't have all the answers, I don't have all the numbers that I know what you guys are looking for, but if there are particular questions that we can answer, we just reach out to the Iowa Department of Public Health, we just have a, we have a contact there, we have an epidemiologist that we contact regularly, or other folks that IDPH to help us to make sure.
And then this last question, to what extent is Story County reaching out to our, I like to call it our sister district, Johnson County, the other, as well as you and I, sorry, the other university towns, to understand what they have in place and what they're doing so that we have learnings from them? Are they, I feel like our numbers are, granted, our numbers are lower, but also our personnel that we're throwing at this are considerably lower than what, say, the University of Iowa is doing?
Yeah, so actually, I just had a call tonight, right before this one, and that was with the University of Iowa, you and I, ISU, and then our counterparts, our public health counterparts, as well as IDPH. And we have been meeting about every couple weeks, just to share information and those kinds of things. So we are in contact with Black Cup Kevin, with you and I, and then as well as Johnson County, with University of Iowa. And then I meet and talk routinely, at least weekly, with Aaron, who is from Iowa State and does, is in charge of their EOC there at Iowa State, as well as student health. So that is my communication meets with the other universities and the other local public healths in those university towns.
Awesome, thank you.
Any other questions? Les? Any questions from the staff, admin team? Well, thanks very much for joining us, Les. I know you've got a few things to do these days, so we appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you. Very impressive.
Not a problem. If you have further questions, you can email me, just it's white, W H I T E at F G M C dot com, or I know you can always call the Home Health, Home Health and Public Health, we're all together, I have all of them, so just give them a call and I'll be happy to help you. So you guys have a good evening, and I thank you for all the hard work, because I know you have a tough job ahead of you. So good luck with everything.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. So I have just two things before we wrap up. One would be, if we think it would be useful, would be, I'd like to hear from the admin team just about resources. Jeff, you talked about what did we need last week, let alone what do we need now? I'd like to hear a little bit about resources, and then I think before we wrap up, we have to be really clear on what's next steps.
What do you mean by resources?
School safety. I'd say anything from physical resources, like the barriers, plexiglass barriers, if we're going to have hygiene stations, masks, whatever physical. I'd also like to hear, and Carrie touched on a little bit, but, you know, where are we at for substitute teachers, or strategies like having additional support people so that you can spread kids out into different rooms? Custodians was brought up in the last meeting. Even somebody either at district level or at the building level that would be our COVID go-to person. I mean, what sort of resources do we need to really be thinking about here? I mean, we talked about the last meeting, but I mean, we need to start having a reality check with what we need.
I think when you talk about resources, that those documents are in our plan, they're linked in our plan, because I know the Health and Safety Committee has gone through, and we all just actually put an order in. I, the P L came through mine, through me, so I saw it. So we've started that, where with the hand sanitizing and masks and gloves and that. So I think that that part, now, each building administrator was asked how many plexiglass barriers they thought they needed, but that was two weeks ago. So I don't know, Lindsay, if you want to, you know, speak to that, where we were with them.
One of the things, like Carrie said, our group, one of the things we put out was an order for that. I think that at that time, each of the building administrators said what they needed for plexiglass barriers. I think that at that time, each of the building administrators said what they needed for Plexiglas barriers, and that was the order that we had put in. We also talked to Dan, right, about the need for, if there is a need for more personnel as far as custodial to help out. Because we're basically, if you're looking at it during the day, there's about one custodian per building. You know, that would be nice to be able to do that. We're trying to figure out ways that we could do that, maybe use some, utilize some of our other staff if they're not utilized at that time. But as far as, has the order been placed? Did Lynn give you the order for the PPE?
I have not seen it, but then I've been
I had, I know that
So I would say somebody
Went through me.
I talked to Dan today, he said a big chunk of stuff came in and it's going to kind of come in.
So you guys are on this?
Well, but the thing that Tyler is mentioning is that there's more than just gloves and masks and whatever. I mean, I think we also need to look at, I think we should probably strongly consider hiring a few full-time subs that we employ for the district. Because I don't think we're going to get people to come in. A large chunk of our subbing pool is older retired teachers. And I think they're probably not going to come in. I think we should, we should look at having several full-time subs that we maybe share. Mike and I share a couple, and Amy and Stacy share a couple at the lower level. And we keep them busy all day, depending on what's needed. I think we should consider that.
Do we have a budget for that? We've already done that.
We've already got, Gail has those numbers, it was in the document that we
I think we should consider, the custodial, the cleaning is going to be a task with one per building, and the buildings are huge. I don't see how one person could keep up with that. I think that's something we need to consider. Gail and I had a conversation about maximizing maybe some of our halftime people. I think maybe if we can use our halftime teaching staff and maybe use them in hourly capacity in the second part of their day to help maybe manage some of the online learning options, I think that would be helpful. Plexiglas, I talked to somebody the other day, and they were saying that's going to be virtually impossible to get a hold of, because everybody's ordering Plexiglas right now. Hospitals, universities, businesses, it's, they're going to go run, there's going to be a run of Plexiglas. So if we're going to do that, and we're talking barriers, if they're inside of three feet, remember, that's probably 14 per classroom, you know?
Yeah, we're, yeah.
It's a lot, a lot to think about, it's just, you know, an infrastructure
You got to think on the, I think you got to go back to what we started with on this Plexiglas thing. We got to get the teachers first. I think we put the kids in masks, they're pretty resilient. All the studies I've seen, even the lady from the Department of Health said that most of the things, there are most of the, what she's seen is in older people. So I think we've got to move like last week on the teachers' best and get that done. If there's no Plexiglas, come up with an alternative, you know, put a lasik and then cochroglaz. I don't know, but let's get something going.
And I think this is where Tyler mentioned, and I agree with it. I think that, I think we need to leave this meeting with some conversation that we are clear about. Everybody's on the same page. And then I think buildings need to go back and take a close look at what it means for them. Because it might not be the same for every building. Another thing in terms of resources that I want to throw out there is the idea of other smaller communities or other districts within our area are likely trying to solve some of the same things from a staffing perspective. We share a chorus teacher now, and it's awesome. Are we able to look into opportunities to share other resources that can help us with online learning? Or other opportunities like that, where maybe we don't have enough for, to keep, you know, all these people busy 100% of the time, but by gosh, between a couple districts, we do. I think we need to go back and we need to look at that, but to just, we need to get back on it.
I suppose that gets kind of challenging, because the curriculum has to be the same.
To a certain degree, but, I mean, we can always think of, the next question can always be no to any idea.
Sure.
But it
Right, but that could be a teacher that you might not have otherwise, right?
Maybe we get another janitor as a floater, you know, you put him where you need him. Maybe Vic needs him because he's got a Friday night basketball game, that, you know, he needs him Saturday, Friday night, Saturday, you know? But then we got a wrestling tournament over at the other school, so we need him over there. So maybe we put a floater in rather than a full-time person.
We talked about that, Jeff. One of the things that we find is that the floater is needed in those buildings at about the same time when they're doing that too. It's not saying that it's not a good idea, I'm not saying that at all. But like, when we were talking to Dan, Carrie and I were about this, and maybe even Gail was in there.
I think I brought it up once, I said, why don't we use the person, you know, and they're like, because it is so hard to find a four-hour person, halftime person.
No, but you hire one full-time.
Well, but they're needed the same, at the same time.
You're going to have to manage that.
So that's
Well, we looked at four, I mean, I think that the cost that we did, you know, was four hard-time people. But knowing that if we couldn't, maybe we would have to go to two full-time and see how we would split them up.
Yes.
Say, you mean?
I just, I feel like, I feel like the principals and their teams in the buildings just need to go back and double-check and make sure. With what you've heard tonight, and I think we need to come back and make some, agree, that we agree on, these are the, these are the things that we said tonight, right? But I think they need to go back and then come up with, what do you need and get on this map? Like, with this in mind, Vic is going back and remeasuring rooms. He's looking at this, he's looking at that. What other things do we need to consider to
I mean, have we tried to order Plexiglas? I mean, that's kind of, that's getting into your guys' business, because that's an operational question, and you know I know all about that. But, I mean, let's have that answer, say, I've tried to order Plexiglas and there isn't any. You know, let's have those answers. And if you find someplace that's got a bunch of Plexiglas, you know, I don't know about you, but you buy it when you got it.
I guess, I realize that we have budgets, and I fully understand that. But if we're saying there's things that we can do now to prepare to bring as many kids back safely into the classroom, then let's do what we need to do. And we need to hear what those resources are from the board, so we can give you the okay to go for it. What I think you need is, well, where's the board coming out? To your point, where are we coming out with regard to what our expectations are? We're not set up to vote on that tonight, but if you want to go around the room again and say, well, where are we at today?
I just wanted to summarize, not to go around the room, but just to say, like, for example, I heard, I didn't hear anybody say that there were thoughts to go back full more, no mitigation. Obviously, in fact, you heard the opposite, unless someone can tell me or I misheard.
No, you're right.
The message is clear, that mitigation and the safety of our staff and students is paramount, right? And there are methods that we want, now the idea is how, how can we come back and maintain those? Is what I heard. I just wanted to say something, is, brief is that? Did I misunderstand that?
I think very soon, we're going to have to be very clear too, because we've talked about in-person and hybrid. And then what I heard, what I really liked from the admin, was parents' choice, right? And so that's where we're going to come out, start working on that plan.
Find out what that number looks like.
Find out what that number looks like.
That's going to change status, that's going to change a lot of
Because Vic gave us, you know, he gave us a rundown on that. He gives half of them, he's pretty good, he gives three-quarters of them, he's okay. He gets
You got to know that soon.
You know, so what is that number?
We do have a draft apparent survey
Good.
That we will, why don't you wanted to share that?
So there's actually, there's one other item on the agenda, which is a chance for them to go over a timeline that they've kind of created, to see if there's any thoughts that we would like to throw at it. But before we do that, I would like to know whether any questions, based off of what I said, from the board or from the admin, that you would need in order, you know, to, any questions you would have about that? What does that mean? What does that mean in terms of expectation? Again, no, we're not, we're not making decisions now, but this is the, can I use the word marching? Not marching orders?
Marching orders are good.
Do you know what I mean?
We can go.
This is what, this is where we are, we are at as a group today. Is that fair, Lindsay? Like, can you say that?
And I guess piggyback off that, you guys speak to other administration staff, I say within the county, let's keep it local, I mean, where are they at? I mean, they're the same, what I assume. I mean, nobody's really come out and said, online only. No one's really come on, everybody's kind of, I assume that by now, they got to have some sort of direction. Everything that I've read is kind of the same goal. Again, we're not saying that the goal is to have the kids back in class. And that's what I'm hearing from the county, but what are you guys hearing from the other admin, like the other superintendents in Story County?
No one's come out and said, this is specifically the way that we're going. Ames is probably kind of the closest, that is, they're going to require a mask and look at a hybrid, I think. And I don't want to even quote that, because I haven't been to the latest meeting on that. But I don't think that anyone has really come out and basically said that. I do want to make you aware of one thing, and that is that I've been in contact with the Association, the Education Association, they surveyed their people. I think they put it out, I don't know, but it's Thursday, and they got it back in on Saturday. And one of the things that they ask that we do is we share that information with you as a board, with our administrative team. And I think there's some things that we can pick up from that. The thing that we didn't put on here, because we did not have that on our agenda tonight, so we didn't put that on there. But I would be willing to say that on Monday night, they may be, for public forum, there may be someone there to go ahead and talk a little bit about that. You will have that ahead of time, so that you can have a chance to look at that. What it is, is some, about four, was it four or five period graphs that they had? And then general questions that was from the staff, so.
Around like, did you say like 80 to 85?
Eight-two.
Eight-two, to be exact. Eight-two staff members go without, yeah.
Oh, I think it's a critical one for me.
Yeah, I do.
Critical, yes.
Yep.
And so you said you have a survey ready to go for our
I have a little bit of tweaking, but yeah, for the parents, yes. And it's got the explanation of what does, what does this look like right now? And, you know, are you thinking, would your, would your child come to, you know? You want your child to come to school? You want to be in a remote learning opportunity, or do you want to homeschool? I mean, they have that opportunity as well. And so I, really, that's what I base the questions off, what other districts have asked as well, so.
And do we feel, like, from the conversation tonight, can we frame up what that in-person looks like?
Yeah, well, that's my question, Jeff, right?
Well, it was just saying
What do you mean, they come back in person?
Yeah, in-person, what does that mean for COVID mitigation? Because if somebody's saying, well, great, I want to send her back, but I don't want her to wear a mask, that may not fit for what Vic's bearing, or what Mike or Stacy
No, and I think that we have to be honest with people. I think you're exactly right, that, that, you know, what, these are mitigation strategies. Staff will be wearing masks, and I think I'm hearing from all of you that, that students would wear masks as well. But my question is, I'm going to go back, and I know I'm like a dog with a bone on this, on the social distancing issue. Where are, how are we landing on that? Are we, when you give, when you ask them to, you know, go back to their buildings and measure, and what, what are we using as a guideline?
I read, I read this weekend that there are some schools putting masks on kids and putting two kids in a seat.
Well, and I think Carrie's point was about social distancing.
Yeah, three feet, six feet.
We have, and so in the return to learn, I would like to ask this question as well of you. But within the return to learn document, they list the, their sources.
Mitigation strategy, AJ.
Yep, they list the sources. Now, those sources don't all have the same social distancing.
Well, and I don't think it should be the same for every school, or we're missing the boat too. Because I just think it looks different, and I got to know that.
So what I, what I heard is the board strongly confirms, affirms COVID mitigation, right? We also have from the return to learn, hey, what is that? Well, first screening, don't send a kid to school that's sick.
And we're asking our parents to partner with us.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's number one, right?
I agree.
I mean, if everybody does that perfectly, there's
That'll help a little bit, that definitely will help.
That's, that's everything. Next, social distancing, right? So those are recommendations. If you go to the WHO, it's one meter. What we hear and what I think everybody's getting stuck on is we hear six feet. Well, that is one of the mitigation. But if we say everything's got to be that, then we're not going to get kids back, right? So social distancing is right from, from the return to learn. Then Plexiglas barriers, I agree with you. Let's find out how much of that we can buy right now. We got to have options. And then it's face coverings, right?
Yeah.
I, I personally would empower Vic, Mike, Amy, and Stacy, figure out a plan that makes sense for your age group, given those mitigation. Because that's what I'm saying needs to be communicated to the parents to make a choice.
Because without it, it's really not helpful.
Right, they might say, well, I said yes, but I didn't realize you weren't doing this. Or I said yes, and didn't realize you weren't doing that.
I think the things you just said, that's
So I just want to ask you a question to make sure I understood what you said. So the six feet that we hear a lot is really, is really six feet, and you don't have other things in place. So they, so there's, you're not able, you don't have a mask
You don't have a mask or anything, right.
So let's use this six, mean, six-foot barrier, is that what your purpose is?
Yeah, yeah, these are not and, and, and.
In the presence of, in the presence of other mitigation, the six feet is less
And we could do one meter with masks.
Is what I heard you say.
Yeah, I mean, if we could do Plexiglas, and then it's, it's one meter, and if we could do that in a way that the kids wouldn't have to wear masks in the classroom, you got that? I mean, those, we just, we got to work through those.
Oh, I agree. I, I know I'm sounding, probably sounding ridiculous, Tyler, and I, I, when we, when we say, okay, everybody go out and you come up with your building plan, when we're putting it together, we have to make sure that, that it's stair steps together.
Yeah.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
We also don't miss the World Health Organization as one of our sources for that. And I'm just saying
But social distancing is listed there, and so the question is, well, what is that? And it varies.
Let's correct our return to learn, is what I'm suggesting. If we're, let's make our actual plan reflect the sources we are using. A safety and health committee came up with what those sources should be, and they, I think, should be consulted.
Same with the American Pediatric Association
They should be consulted, and that same group such, did such a great job of that. This is changing, I think
I'm more concerned with clarifying to parents to the best of our ability, this is what we think it's going to look like.
We're kind of running on it, you know, we just have to make sure that
No, and that's why I'm, that's why I'm clarifying that question. Because as they're going to be given that charge, and we've got to have a little descriptor in our survey, we just have to make sure that, that as we're stair stepping that, her building, that it, that they fit. Or that it doesn't look like one is extremely out of place from the others. That's all I'm saying.
So I personally think you can use this mitigation strategy straight from the return to learn and get that into a survey and say, and there'll be questions, well, what exactly does that mean? Well, Vic's got to figure, work on that, and I'm not putting, I say at the building level, but that's because I think they really need to know, and they do know what works best. And at that point, parents will know a heck of a lot more. If they know, we're trying to get as many kids back as want to come back using COVID mitigation, that's more than they knew last time we met. Then, well, what's the virtual option for those that don't? And I think that's another resource thing that we really need to understand too. Vic, you brought it up, I appreciate you bringing that up. But by the time we meet again, what's the options for live streaming? So that teachers don't have to go home at night and then turn around and prepare for online.
Well, and I, I think we have to be really careful with this, because those remote learners, I think to say that they're going to just livestream and they're not going, that's not what their learning is going to be. Their learning has to be tailored to online learning. And online learning is not watching what the other kids are doing in the classroom, and I'm just going to be an observer. That's got to be, we've got to have engaging online learning for those students, so it's going to look different. And that's where your staffing is going to come into play. It can, they, it's apples to oranges there.
So we need to know.
Yeah, well, I just tell them that's what I
So what, any questions? I think we had a lot of conversation. Mike, you have a question?
Well, I had a hard time with some of the conversation just with the audio. So I think Carrie asked the question, the one safety measure that changes schools structurally is social distancing, because I can't, I can't have six feet of space and have all of the kids. I'm not even sure I can have three feet of space and have all of the kids. So there was conversation, I just couldn't pick up all of it. And so I guess I'm just asking for clarity on, Carrie asked where the board's at, and I couldn't quite gather them. Because that's the one that really changes structurally, you know?
In my opinion, Mike, you don't need to have both. So if you're walking into the building and they're not going to be six feet apart, they're wearing a face mask to get into the building. We're still having the conversations at six feet, three feet. In my opinion, we can do three feet, as long as we get to the point where now they're seated, and there's a barrier, and now I've got three feet away from this other student, and I'm in the classroom. Now, when I get ready to get up and leave the classroom, I got to put a face mask on, because I'm not going to have six feet social distancing to walk out, because I'm going to go to a different classroom. So that, the key point that we talked about a little bit at the end of last meeting was, it's not an and, it's an or for those mitigation.
I think it's, I understand what you're saying, and I'm, please, I'm not trying to make this confusing. But it is, it's possibly an and, or in those three situations. But we are putting out as much mitigation as possible in other aspects of it. I heard Les White say, well, we're going to, if somebody tests positive, we're going to ask who's been within six feet for more than 15, for 15 minutes at a time. So that tells me somebody with masks or others that are rushing, you know, passing in the hallway or for very brief, very passing in the hallway or for very brief periods of time feels like that's within the guidelines or within the guidance that we would have, right? It's not six feet and the little sumo bubbles that we have. Like, I don't know. Do you feel better about that after hearing those conversations, or is it just as?
I don't think it hurt you.
Just as confusing?
Deb, I have a hard time hearing you, I'm sorry.
I said really important things, I did, I did.
I'm sorry.
Um, yeah.
So I guess I have a quick question about that. If you're saying, you know, if you're going to be within six feet, then you need to have a mask, are we coming down on required masks? Because I think right now, our plan says they're strongly encouraged, but we have not come down on required masks.
Stacy, we would be looking for you for a recommendation as to how you think it works in your school.
Well, I mean, obviously, I think, I, I'm like Mike. If we are, if we're, if our goal is all kids, I don't think I can have, I can't have all kids in the classroom six feet apart. I'm a little bit like Mike, I'd be struggling to get them three feet apart. I, I like the idea of saying, like, with masks, but my fear is, what about the kids who choose not to wear masks? Do I then say, well, then you have to be six feet? I don't know how to work that out statistically, I guess unless we're saying we're requiring masks.
Yeah, I, I read a bunch on your, the kids your age, and most of, and most of the, what I read this weekend is kids are not required to wear them that are your age, that you have in your school. At multiple schools, they were required not to wear masks.
I would be.
But they were requiring the teachers, just a second, they're requiring the teachers to wear them, but not the kids, that are, the real, young kids. That's, I read that on two or three different schools.
I read the same thing, like, starting about third grade on up, when they start wearing masks, or required district, or kids to wear masks.
Amy, answer, answering that.
Thank you. Okay, I think I can make notes so I can remember what I wanted to say, but about the survey, I just feel very strongly that it has to be very clear so that we get clean data from our results, because that is how each of the four of us are going to move forward with our plans for our building. And then I also think we need to consider, which hasn't been a discussion, at least that I know of, on what our protocol is, of the fluidity of in and out versus, and what I mean by that is, so if I choose to keep my child home at the start of this year, at what point can I now re-enter? Knowing that some of that online work is going to look a little different than if they would have been in the classroom, and how that affects coming in, and the workload, you know, on our staff. And, and the students going out would not be as challenging, I think, if students just all of a sudden, if we just every day have a new student start joining us, I think we just need to make sure as a team we've got that protocol, and I think the parents need to understand that as well. The other thing is that social distancing, you know, we've heard Dr. Padati from this date, we've heard Les just talk about, you know, in the Pediatrics Report, is that we know social distancing cannot happen at six feet apart in a school, and we have to think about our kids' learning experience. And if we are going to put them in the corner six feet apart, and they're in school just all day long for seven hours, that's going to be really hard to keep students engaged. And so I just want to make sure we're all on that same page, which I was encouraged to hear, that, hey, if we have masks, I think we can get by with not having that social distancing requirement. But again, that has to be very clear in the surveys to parents, so that they know what's expected or what we are not or are doing, in their opinion, for them to make that decision on their child coming back.
I think those are good, good questions, good to clarify. My, my approach to that, again, is it's an or, it's not an and. So that's why I think it's important for each of you to think about what's best in my school, in my building, for my age group. And we gotta trust that you guys are using all this information in our return to learn to go, this is what makes the most sense. If I were to use a term for the survey, it'd probably be, we are willing to take moderate risk, not low risk, which would basically be, we're virtual, or we just have enough for a few kids to come back. And then we use it, but we do plan to use all these mitigation risks. I mean, I think that's how I would frame it. From my, my opinion on your other one, I think that's a really good, that I would ask for your recommendations as well. My sister teaches in Phoenix, and to that question, she was asked, or basically their approach is the teachers have to, or the parents have to decide, am I going to have my child in school or not? And it's a semester choice.
Yeah, very interesting.
Yeah.
Because, because they have, they have to make decisions about, well, what are my resources? How many virtual teachers do I need?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good, that's good.
Again, back to the choice, so let's, again, your kid gets COVID, he's out in two weeks, there needs to be some sort of, you know.
Yeah, that's different.
It's two weeks is a short term, I agree, it's easier than.
Yes.
But it's, it's different than, I'm.
So bring back my child.
And they're, they're virtual to start, but after a month or two, wow, I think it's better, well.
I think, yeah, the chickenpox, right? I've got to say, you need to do the best game to keep up on this stuff.
It's very different than if I decided to, to do virtual learning at home. At least that, I agree with you on this semester thing.
I think that's something to bring forward then.
Exactly, I think that should be, I think.
Stacy has a question.
Mike Davis has a question.
Mike can't hear me anyway, so can you hear that I said, go ahead and talk?
No, I just was going to, just, you know, like I said, the one that's, that, that changes the structure of our school is, is social distancing. And so that's one, I think, maybe, Mr. Beecher, then you're just going to have to decide for the district if we're going to do it or not. That's the one where I don't think you can have buildings tampering it to each other, because that's going to limit the number of kids coming. And then to put teachers in a spot where they're not going to have childcare, possibly. And so then you have teachers that don't come to school, because they just stay home and take care of their kids. So that act that was passed is an issue. So the social distancing is one where I feel like, as an individual building administrator, I, I can't really make that call, because it's going to change the structure of how the district, it's going to impact all of the other buildings too.
Mike, we're not asking you to do that. What we're telling you is, what we're suggesting is, you're going to wear a mask in your building, and then the social distancing might be a meter and not six feet. So we'll make that decision for you, how the kids come back.
And I think what he's saying is he wants to hear from you guys.
I do not want six feet social distancing to stop us from bringing the kids back to this district.
Is that bad, right? I'm just, we're just trying to clarify, because I think we're all saying the same thing.
You've got other mitigation tools.
Yeah, and we have two board numbers speaking, so, I mean, I would assume if people disagree with that, they're going to speak up.
Six feet's not an option. We came up, we can't hit six feet. If we can do six feet, we're going to do it, but if we can't do it, we want at least three feet, so.
So are we going to say you want people to do three feet? Or are you going to say, you know what, if we've got a mask on, we want kids there? No, that's, I, I'm not, I, I, I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm not understanding where you guys are feeling about that.
When you can't have three feet, then you gotta have masks. But the ideal, what we're shooting for is three feet, this isn't going to be perfection. This is going to be what we can do, and so if we can't be three feet, then we're going to have masks on. If we are three feet with plexiglass, then you take your mask off until you're not going to be three feet apart with a piece of plexiglass, if we can find the plexiglass.
Amen.
You know, so I mean, the thing is, is we are not going to, this is going to be, probably, I mean, we're going to have a lot of issues around this, and we're just going to have to have a high level of patience. But the idea is, we're just going to do the best we can, and we gotta communicate that that's what we're going to do the best we can. Go ahead, Vic.
I'm just going to throw this out there, because I think it needs to be said, and I think what Mike, and I'm not, I'm trying not to speak for Mike, but I'm just thinking in my own way to think through this, like, we have to live with whatever this is. We have to deal with it on a daily basis. We have to deal with the phone calls, the parents, the upset kids. So the more clear it is for us, the better we can plan, the better we can move forward. One thing we can't do is, we can't have one building that wants to do one thing, and one building wants to do something else.
But yes, we can.
Yes, we can.
And you need to just know that we have to have that.
I understand that, I understand that at the lower level, I understand that at the lower level, but we're going to, I don't know. I think what's going to happen is, we're going to say, well, Vic and Mike are really hard about these masks, and they're not having to wear them anywhere else. Or, or Vic doesn't believe in wearing masks, but Mike does. Like, I, I think we, I think we need guidance, like, if, if you're going to be the three feet, inside the three feet, then there needs to be plexiglass. If you can't have the plexiglass, then everyone needs to be wearing masks during class. I think, and if there's transition times, and everyone needs to be wearing masks, I think there, there needs to be some clear guidance, otherwise I think it's going to create individual issues for individual administrators.
But don't you think you'll have that, Vic, with the idea of the things that you can be clear on will be clear? I mean, if you were to sit with the principals and be like, okay, we're going to have masks for all the kids that are old enough to wear them, when we're in the halls, we're going to have masks on. So then, I mean, do you think you could build that kind of agreement?
I think we can, I think, I definitely think there is some difference between younger ages. I mean, I don't, I don't know. I, I think that we need to have some consistency amongst us when, when we're developing some of these processes, because it is going to be, you know, if, if Mike is saying, I'm just throwing Mike's name out there, he's using plexiglass barriers every time they're within the three feet, but I'm not, because I interpreted it differently than how Amy interpreted it. I mean, I just want to be very clear how we're moving forward, so we can just get on the ground and start rolling.
That, I 100% agree with that, Vic. There, there are some, a few guy, I don't want to say guiding principles, because that doesn't sound strict enough, but there are a few rules, overarching rules, that everybody needs to play by. I think Tyler said it, though, it's this, or this, or this, right? You said it, I think the way you said it was easy to understand, right? When there's not three feet, there's plexiglass or a mask. And that is not necessarily different between the buildings. They need that kind of support in order to, to make these decisions. That's, I, I believe that, that we need, and, and then you can be a little, you can be different in maybe how you solve for those things, right? But they, we, that's the district part of this. And, and that needs to, I think, come from you, right? The, that, that guidance about that, and, and there isn't leeway about it, whatever those guiding, those nuggets are, right? Which I think is safety and health.
I just want to, I don't know if this will help, and happy to share it, but my wife worked on the health committee, and she's working on a lot of stuff at Iowa State and all, and I said, honey, just put together a cheat sheet, right? And this was Gail's cheat sheet. Mitigation strategies for choosing to come to school. Screening, gotta get that message out. No sick people, kids, or, or, or teachers, or staff. You don't want them to stay home. We gotta really encourage that, right? Next, hand hygiene. She tells me this all the time, keep your hands clean and keep them away from your face, right? But then, face covering when you can't physically be distanced or protected by a barrier. What's the physical distance? This is where I think the board needs to go, we're going to stand behind three feet. Physical barriers on tables allows you to then take the mask off. Other considerations, this is Gail's list, other considerations for you, allow more additional time outdoors. COVID transmits minimally outdoors, especially the younger kids. Give them more resources, get them outside, right? Utilize more spaces, can we add assistance to, and, and spread out into more rooms? Can we put up temporary tents to start off with if we want more space, because if temperature allows? Can we use the church? Can we use City Hall? Can we use, right?
Maybe just for lunch periods, or something where there's large quantities.
Can we increase ventilation? And probably more at the younger ages, but how about stable cohorts as much as possible, right? So that's the group, I mean, that's how daycares are doing it, right? We saw a daycare go by us this afternoon, and they got their groups. And then, I mean, then this is back to the, to the principals, but, you know, work with your scheduling. I mean, does block scheduling make more sense? Because then they're, they're not moving as much, they're not changing as much. I mean, just, we don't want to dictate to you what that looks like specifically in your building, but we want to be crystal clear about how we want to help and support you to come back. So that's, that's Gail's mitigation strategy.
And I assume because she was on that, so, that committee, that that is reflected, I know that it is, within our.
I would think somewhat that yours and Mike's people will look alike, Vic. I think maybe some of the girls' stuff will look alike, but I don't think that the two-year-olds are going to look like the seniors. It's just not going to happen.
We don't have two-year-olds.
For second graders.
We don't have two-year-olds.
Sorry, second graders.
I think, I would suggest that we talk a little bit about next steps.
Yeah, so the next item, so, okay, I, I think that we, I think that was clear, I think that helped. Vic, Mike, anybody, I think, let us know if there's a question. I think that, I think that's clear, where the board stands, and I think the rest is up to you. The, in terms of the next steps, what we had asked, or what I had asked, was that the, the team put together what they thought was like a proposed timeline to, to kind of show what the, the ideas are that they have. And then it's our opportunity to ask questions and see if something's missing, maybe in terms of communication or timing. So Carrie, or Lindsay, do you want to?
Doesn't matter. This hasn't been with all administrators' input, because we've been going at different times. This is looking at, from when I talked to Deb, the, some type of a timeline that could be out there so people could know when they might be seeing different things. Of course, we have the work session tonight. We put a staff survey, that was before we knew that there was going to be a staff survey that was done through the GEA. That could maybe move down into a later date as we have more details, and we can share that GEA one with you. Return to learn plan, this is, again, we're going to have this as an action item for a week from tonight, as far as what's going to happen with that or not. A lot of school districts are making the action, that as an action item. Communication update sent to families. So what we're trying to do is this, if we do, like, what we're talking about on the 20th, the 21st, we need to get some type of release out to parents so that they know what in the heck's going on. That's, that's what everyone's talking about, what are you doing, how are you doing this? And then we would have a parent survey, Carrie talked about that. One of the things that the, the Story County superintendent's talked about too is, hey, we don't have to reinvent the wheel here, we can share some of the different things that's being out there, and there may be some good things to share. Next one, and I don't know, I have, I have some questions on the, this, the protocol and the metrics. I would like to have that set up so that, that we know when we're going to move from one to the other. Now, maybe Les is, is not saying that we can't do that, but I'll tell you what, if we don't have something in place, and I think that we are, because I think that Ames is really pushing hard on that, I think Jenny is, we have to have something, because if we don't, there's going to be, I don't know, how many different school districts in this county, and we're all going to be doing different things. We can't do that, we gotta try to at least come together on that, and I think that we can. That would be released to the board, so the board could look at those metrics and see what's going to happen. Then, and there's nothing magical about the 29th, then putting that out to the public, so the public knows. When are you going to move from, maybe if you're at a hybrid, and you're, things have gotten better, you're going to go to a, a full board situation? Then we talked about some things as far as getting information out to the certified staff, the classified staff, and having a, you know, a Zoom type of setup for questions and answers, so that they can, those can be answered, so that, I think, I think you'll see when you get the information from the staff, there's, there's questions, and then some of the same things that you guys have asked too. It's not anything that, that is out of the ordinary. Everyone wants to bring kids back, if we can do it in a safe way, we can do it in a safe way for kids, and we can do it in a safe way for our staff. But that would be, looking at that, and then, again, August 10th, that's our next meeting, the approval of, of that start date, that can be, I mean, you can move that up to wherever you want to as a board. But, and then we talked about best options for parent information meetings. I think, you know, we're, we've had some people that have already talked to us about parent information meetings and what's going to happen there. So that's just a draft of, of what's been put together there. It's very similar to what you've seen in some other districts around us. And that, there's nothing, there's nothing set in stone here, people, that says, well, you know that, I don't understand why the heck he chose the 29th to do that, release of the metrics. We, we can move that around.
Well, the part is, we weren't sure when, I mean.
What's going to happen.
Yeah, we're hoping that we could get it done earlier, but.
The parent survey, I mean, really, just from talking, you know, we're talking about semester, semester in, semester out, it's really not a survey, it's a registration. You're asking, are you going to send your kids or not?
Well, we have some other things in there that, that we need to ask parents about, that would be like, oh, I'm trying to think of.
But we need, Mike, point is, we need a hundred percent. We need a hundred percent of, so in a survey, we're always happy with, oh, we got 50% respond. Well, that, that's not going to work.
No, but we're going to ask people to put their names in, so we can reach out to the people that.
So, okay, so, I mean, that's good, our goal is to hit.
Our goal is to hit, we're going to ask every family to fill it out, and this could seem. And this could seem a little redundant for every kid because you know what? You're, you have two kids that will be in the district next year. What you do for Emily and what you do for Hannah could be very different. And so we need to make sure that we're addressing that. So we are going, we will have names attached to that.
The same point of that too, in my mind, when we go through all the answer to the questions, we got to let them know, if you change your mind, you need to let us know. I mean, that, that, because everything we're basing it off of, we're going to be doing everything based off of those.
You better believe that.
The only change that, that I would propose for the board would be on, on July 20th, that we decide a model and August 10th, we ratify it. Because how are we going to plan otherwise?
I, I would agree. I, my opinion, we got to choose one. And again, we got to use it with the best information we have today, make the best decision we can make today, and we move forward because.
And where the principals, the principals need to know what to plan for.
And this, and what we got to plan for is, is the idea that we aren't going to have a whole bunch of kids that have, that test positive for COVID. It's going to happen. And so the idea is, is we just have to be nimble to say, okay, what does that look like? Uh, for each of the schools, as to how we keep moving forward and we're going to have to take a 14-day break. And how does that look like? Does that mean one classroom goes home and the rest of them keep going and all the detail that goes around that? But we need to figure on a lot of kids having COVID. Pray, pray to God that it's asymptomatic and nobody gets really sick. But I think that's, we just got to get more comfortable with, hey, it's not going to be comfortable. And we have to do the best we can.
But at the same time, we've got to make decisions.
Oh, no, no, I'm saying, I'm saying, when we make this decision, to have all the kids come back, it, it's going to be messy. And we just need to figure it be messy. And so we got to really button down the teachers. We got to secure the teachers and keep the teachers from getting it in every possible way that we can. Because the kids are going to get it.
Okay, so I understand your point. Um, I'm sitting here looking, and I'm sorry to say this, but looking at Vic, who, I don't know that he buys into that. Um, are you, what are your thoughts about, I know you're not board member, trying to do this. You just really want to go home or does that give you like?
No, I, I mean, it's, this is overwhelming. I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot to do and there's, we're, we're getting short on time and.
Yeah.
I think the sooner you can get the information to us to, to, so we can start planning, the better things are going to be.
I understand.
We want to meet later this week.
I mean.
I think that we're getting a, like, the.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, let me talk, let me talk.
That's, that's just my thought and that's my concern about being here because I'm not representing the admin team. I mean, they are here to, to, to represent themselves. But I think the sooner we can make some decisions about how we're moving forward, the better we can start planning and getting things in place. The later we wait, the harder it gets, the more, I mean, it's, it's going to be rough.
August 10th is too late.
I, I feel that, but I'm, I'm, I'm just.
I agree with you, I agree with you.
I mean, I think, I would love to hear what everyone else thinks.
Okay.
Good.
So it looks like right now we have, um, Return to Learn Plan on the 20th. And it sounds like we need to look at that agenda to make sure that we make that clear, that that will be our initial, um, this is what we.
Moving forward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then I do like the, the August 10th being ratification. Of course, that's just a, um, it's a, yeah, it's a formality. But I mean, it's also, we're mitigating that, we're, we're ratifying this throughout, it's not really just set dates.
Yeah, so that we don't put Vic on, on the.
Oh, we don't put Vic on the spot, sorry.
Can we ask any of the other administrators if they can weigh in? Because I, I, you know, he's here and I'm glad he's here. But are any of the other administrators have anything that you'd like to weigh in on? Uh, I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
About the 20th.
I just think, I mean, like Vic said, yes, there's a lot of work to be done, but we've got to have accurate information in order to know how to move ahead. It sounds like we're all pretty much in agreement as far as parent choice. And let's get kids back in school for those parents that are feeling comfortable. We're going to take mitigation strategies as our number one priority to keep staff, staff and students safe. But we've got to get information on how many we're talking and not coming. You know, if I have 20% of each grade level, or am I going to have 20% of my building? You know, those are big differences in how I structure my teams and my classes and figure out how the online portion of that programming looks. So that's to me my biggest thing. Um, and I think middle school and high school probably have a few more obstacles that Stacy and I don't necessarily have.
I think, uh, like I said, my big worry and raised a couple of times is social distancing. It's good to hear that we, you know, um, the six feet is, the board has been clear that that's something that, I'm not sure I can do three feet, to be honest with you, with all the kids, that's something I have to go in and check. But I think, you know, what I've heard tonight, I think we can, we can make work. I think there's some things that I can do, um, and, and put into place. So, um, you know, I feel good, I feel better, um, a- after this. I think, um, the thing, like I said, that worried me was the social distancing just because that dramatically changed the way that, that, um, everything ran. So, um, I, I think what I'm hearing is, you know, uh, three foot of space, if not, then masks, um, if not, then barrier or something like that.
Yeah.
And I don't know that we'll get enough barriers, so I think we're really looking at three foot of space or, or masks. Um, of course, you know, Vic alluded to this. I'm a little worried that when I have an eighth grader who shows up purposely not wearing a mask, um, just to, because they will, um, you know, and then what kind of fight that will turn into be because I'm sure that it will become a political thing. Um, I, I believe in the masks, but I just know at some point, and probably Vic or I will be the ones that, that are the targets of that, just kids intentionally not doing it to, to see what happens. Um, but, um, I feel much better after this conversation.
If, if I can without belaboring it. Mike, I'm glad you brought that up. This is why I think we need to continue to have group alignment because we all have to be supporting each other. And so if, in that example, we describe what's required in our school and unfortunately if a child isn't going to respect that, we can't have them in that school.
Yeah, and I think that can be part of the conversation too. The audience to be abundantly clear.
And have parental sign off that they agree and.
Cindy?
How it's going to work. Cindy, absolutely.
Cindy?
I'll just echo Mike's point about, I feel like we have more of a direction as a result of tonight, so that's really helpful. It'll be great to be able to communicate where we're headed with staff because I'm eager to hear from staff if any of them will have concerns or what, what we, what concerns of staff we might need to meet. I think we know, we now know some of the things we talked about tonight and where we're headed. They don't have, everybody's still waiting on that. So that would be great if we could communicate with staff soon.
Awesome.
Cindy, I think it'll help too if we get the survey out as far as that information because you will see, and it kind of breaks it out as far as you can kind of see, well, these are maybe some high school concerns or these were maybe intermediate concerns. So I think that would be helpful too.
Okay. Any other comments on this? Otherwise, one thing that I would just make is maybe we, I'm not sure if, given what you have today, if maybe that parent survey, if you feel like it has to wait till the 22nd or that we can get on that soon, as soon as possible. I don't know.
I, I.
If you're waiting till the 20th.
No, we can, we can send it out, and we can send it out.
We have to wait till we.
We have to understand.
So we have to, we have to, we have to have a.
A clearer guidance.
It depends. Clearer guidance, I mean, we have to be able to.
So we're going to wait till the 20th.
Perhaps we can have it queued up.
Yeah.
We can have it queued up and. But we could have it ready on the 24th.
Okay.
I mean, it could go out right afterwards.
Okay.
Cool.
All right.
Now, I think every day counts right now. I feel your anxiety, Vic, I do. And, and I want to make sure you and all the principals know, we greatly appreciate your efforts. If it helps for us to do a Zoom meeting in two days, just to say, that is where we're at. If that's fact and it helps by having a few extra days to keep moving, I'm willing to do that.
Don't let the board slow you down.
I would, I would ask that you guys reach out to us for that. I don't want to set those up just if, if they're not needed, but I think that we, we do need some advance because we have to do so following our open meeting loss.
Oh, you've got a meeting loss.
Yeah, but, right? Let's maybe give that a second to just sit and come back about when that cadence can be because we're willing and able to.
I just want you to know.
Back to the parent survey too, what's the timeline and what else we completed then? If we set it out on the 21st or 22nd, whatever that date is.
We'd like to turn it around in less than a week.
Okay, good, that's good.
So that we can, and like I said, then the people that don't, we will literally be knocking there. And we have to knock their, you know, knock on the door and do what we want.
Then we'll have to release that information, obviously, too.
Yes, and then, yes.
They're going to be asking, they're going to be wondering.
Yeah.